Test, test. We're all set for six o'clock.
Evening. Let's call to order the special planning commission meeting study session at of ten twenty seven twenty twenty five. Six P M. Six P M. The city doesn't tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. This planning commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the commission. If a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of the order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the planning mission agenda. Use the show caption button to view captions on Zoom. Following this study session, the regular planning commission meeting will begin at seven P M. We encourage the public to stay tuned and participate in the regular meeting. Our recording officer, may we, may we please have Rosa Olko?
Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Chair Iglesias.
Present.
Commissioner Saroni.
Present.
Commissioner Segura.
Present.
Commissioner Pine.
Present.
Vice Chair Shukla.
Thank, a present.
Commissioner Fagoni.
Present.
We have seven commissioners present.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, file number twenty five dash one zero two one. Is there a staff report?
Chair, members of the plan commission and members of the public. My name is Wendy Lau, associate planner. The item before you tonight is a study session for planning application twenty twenty five zero zero eight zero for a proposed residential project at eight four five Stewart Drive. The project consists of a special development permit to construct twenty eight town home style condominiums. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, let me start over again. The application consists of a special development permit to construct twenty eight town home style condominiums. The application also includes a best intent of map for condominium purposes. The site is located at the northwest corner of Stewart and DeGyn Drive. It is currently occupied by a one story commercial building that includes a restaurant. The surrounding area is primarily comprised of industrial manufacturing and technology oriented uses, including Apple to the north, a cell to the west, medical offices to the south, and Trimble to the east. Multi-family residential developments are located further to the north and to the east. The project site is also in the former T R W microwave site to the west, a designated federal super fund site due to environmental contamination from past industrial activities. As a result, the applicant has submitted phase one and two assessments, which are currently under review by the city's environmental consultants. The results of this analysis will be shared with the public as part of the public hearing process, and the proposed project will be required to remediate the site prior to any residential development. The subject site is one point one six acres or fifty thousand eight hundred sixty two square feet. It has a general plan minus designation of residential medium. The site is owned industrial and service, industrial to residential, and see residential, with a planned development combining district. This ceiling allows for residential use. The proposed project would demolish the existing building, which was constructed in nineteen seventy four, to allow for the new multifamily development. On the screen is the site plan. The proposed project consists of four buildings totaling twenty eight units. Each unit will have thirty different rooms and two parking spaces in a ground floor garage, either side by side or tandem. The site also includes five visitor parking spaces. There would be two driver entrances, one along the guide drive and another along Stewart Drive. Addition, applicant proposes two transformers, each eight feet tall along the guide drive, which staff will discuss in more details later. On the screen are the elevations for room three, each containing ten units. The south elevation of the front doors would face Stewart Drive, while the east elevation would face the guide drive. The buildings are three stories tall and from three feet four inches to four feet just in height, as measured from the top of the curb. The south elevation along Stewart Drive includes four front doors and a combination of stucco with brick veneer on the ground floor. However, the installation of the drive features primary stucco with a tiered floor and doesn't incorporate the front doors of brick veneer. On the screen are the elevations for room two, which is a three unit building located on Stewart Drive. On the screen. Just five can towards the middle of the site. On the screen is a streetscape elevation of the proposed project along Stewart Drive next to the existing neighboring building. On the screen is the streetscape elevation along the guide drive. In addition, two transformer cabinets of approximately eight feet height, seven and a half feet width, and seven and a half feet length are proposed of the guide frontage as indicated by the outline. The plans do not indicate what the transformers would be screened from the public right away. The applicant is requesting some information from the development standards, including setbacks, building height, log coverage, loadings, and open space. The applicant is also requesting a waiver to not provide an entrance along the deGyn frontage as required by the city's objective design standards. In addition, the applicant is requesting to locate the transformer of balcony rather than below ground. It has not proposed any screening. However, the applicant has indicated they will continue to explore design solutions following tonight's study session. The applicant held an in-person community outreach meeting on October fourteenth. Two members of the public attended, expressing support for the building design and concerns about construction noise and dust. Staff has also received a public comment letter expressing concerns about environmental contamination in nearby super fund and cleanup sites. The project will be required to comply with all noise and dust control, dust control measures during construction and remediate the site prior to any residential development. Tonight, staff is seeking the plant commission's feedback on several topics. The first is general feedback regarding the site layout, including the transformer location and design. The second is the architectural design, particularly the east frontage which faces the guide drive. The third is general feedback regarding the requested waivers, concessions, and deviations. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions the commission may have. The applicant is also here tonight to provide a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I will now ask for questions from my colleagues. I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and open the public comment. Oh, afterwards, sorry. Yeah. So. If anyone has any question for staff. I don't see any hand. So maybe I'll just ask. I had one question, but. I'll just wait after the. Oh, I'll just wait for my questions later on. You have a question? Oh, I don't see any hand. You have a question? I don't. Oh. Thanks. Sorry. So, yes, please, Mr. Iglesias.
Thank you. So my question is regarding the requested key waivers and deviations. Can you advise us on what we are legally required to do?
So right now for the study session, we're just generally getting your feedback on them. There's quite a few of them, I think. The table that Wendy has included in the slide presentation is maybe the the higher ones that are more important to bring up. When the project comes before you for the public hearing, we'll have a more detailed explanation of what all of them are, but right now we're just focusing on the ones that are more more significant.
Let me, let me ask my question differently.
Okay.
Does this project qualify to where they are allowed to have both deviations or unlimited waivers?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm just trying to see. I don't see anything. Okay, so I'll. I'll go ahead and open the public comment on this specific item. Or is there an application report? Sorry, I need to go for the application.
Yes, that's not yet here tonight.
Yes, applicant's report, please. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Julia Cottman Norton, and I'm the project manager for City Ventures on the project before you tonight. Before we get into the details of the project, we want to share a bit about City Ventures. We're an infill builder with projects all over Northern California and the Bay Area. Near Sunnyvale, we have projects in San Jose, Los Gatos, Redwood City, and Santa Clara, as well as Morgan Hill. And we're excited to be here tonight to present our first Sunnyvale project to you. City Ventures is a solar all-electric builder. We install all of the sustainability measures that you would expect, including Nest thermostats, E V chargers, et cetera. But we're also creative in how we approach sustainability. We use greener concrete, we use less lumber, and we really focus on how to make a site more walkable. As infill developers, we work hard to ensure our projects complement the neighborhood we're building in. We have different programs, architecture, and housing types that we select based on the project context. Here, we've selected examples of our past projects with a more traditional architectural style that inspired the project that you're reviewing tonight. We are very excited to be proposing a project in this neighborhood. The site is currently surrounded by more commercial uses, but we really think this will be a great catalyst for the neighborhood. This project, called The Arcade, is located on the parcel at the corner of Stewart and DeGyn, just south of East Dwayne Avenue and east of North Wolf Road. And it's developed with an underutilized commercial building that currently includes only one tenant, a restaurant, and a surface parking lot with very limited pervious area. There's an existing sidewalk along the DeGyn Drive side of the site, but no sidewalk connecting to Guide Drive along Stewart. The project will involve demolishing the existing improvements, grading the site, installing new utilities, and installing new landscaping. When we first looked at the project, our goal was really to take this corner site and create a sense of place. We focused on facing outwards instead of inwards, celebrating entries off of Stewart. And we worked closely with staff to create a separation between the sidewalks and the greenway to provide a softness and allow for the landscaping to tie into the surrounding sites. We also worked with staff on circulation in and out of the site, including entrances off of both DeGyn and Stewart. And as currently designed, you'll enter into the site from Stewart, seeing the common open space, greenery, and trees lining the site. We're also proposing a sidewalk wrapping around from DeGyn to Stewart for additional walkability of the site. Here you can see the building elevation from Stewart Drive. As I mentioned, the site is a currently underutilized, single-story, mostly vacant commercial building. Our vision includes connecting Stewart Drive to the town homes, and we work to create a lot of articulation in the building facade, including different projections and recesses to create visual interest. The project utilizes a traditional architectural style while also using a mansard roof, so the H V A C units and solar panels are hidden from view. And here's the building elevation from DeGyn Drive. You can see we have a lot of articulation here as well, including vines on both elevations and on trellises above garage doors to really make the site feel more alive. This is a very efficient site plan. We have a limited amount of central open space and passeos, so we really wanted to do something pretty cool here. That was a reference to the number of arcade games that were invented here in Sunnyvale, but in a subtle way. You can see examples of those here. And it, it's been a real pleasure to work with staff, and we appreciate all the help and direction we've gotten from Wendy, Julia, and Sean on this. And we're happy to be here before you to get your thoughts on our project before we bring it to you for a formal planning commission hearing. Thank you so much for your time. Again, we're really excited about this project and thrilled to be here in Sunnyvale and available for any questions.
Thank you. Now I. So I will go ahead and open the public comment on this item. But first I will have my colleagues to have any questions. Okay, so I, so please, Mr. Saroni, please.
Thank you, vice chair. Just a couple of quick questions. So I guess staff, you said they, they are. They're building fifteen percent below market, so they qualify for the waivers and the. So the, can you clarify the zoning? It's, it's apparently zoned residential, but it's not that now. Was it rezoned at some point?
Yes, the site was recently rezoned. It now has multiple zoning designations, including industrial to residential and the R three and the P D or planned development combining district. So this does allow for the residential use as well as planned development, which allows for some flexibility in zoning districts.
And for the applicant, can, why do you want to put the, why do you want the transformers above ground?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Samantha Howser. I'm with City Ventures as well. As far as the transformers, this is something that we don't love ourselves, right? Having to find the mechanical staff, backfill preventers, all of the stuff that we really appreciate being kind of behind fences. We would love to not have transformers and have them below ground. Unfortunately, the groundwater is really shallow here. So from a geotechnical perspective, we have to have them above ground. One thing that we could do when we were considering this location, we were trying to keep them off of Stewart and out of the common open space. Those two spaces are potentials. The other thing that staff kind of flagged to us is that they are listed by our joint trench designer as eight foot high transformers. That is the tallest transformer I have ever seen. I've never seen a transformer bigger than me, and I'm five five. So we have a call into our joint trench designer to clarify, but we wholly agree that that should A be a hundred percent screened and B be as unobtrusive as possible, because we really want the architecture to shine.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought that might be, might be the reason for that. I worked for a number of years at eight twenty five Stewart Drive with the building shown as the T R W super fund site and in the parking lot next to that building had an underground pump pumping water out when it rained. And if that failed, which did happen, there was the whole area flooded. So I can very much believe the groundwater is very high there. And because it was a super fund site, there was a big apparatus in back of the building that would be constantly pumping groundwater, filtering it, and pumping it back down. I drove by the other day and it looks like that is no longer there, which I hope means they got it cleaned up. I don't know. And they would also take samples all over the parking lot, and maybe they've done the same thing at your facility. So I'll be interested in the, the results of that, of that study. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please, next, Mr. Chair.
Thanks.
Thank you, vice chair. So in your introduction, you talked about how it's important for your company, and you're proud about being very green. I would just love to hear a little bit about if there's anything in this particular project in the building materials or the approach. And you mentioned solar panels being hidden, but anything in particular that would might excite us about this being a green project?
Sure. So, you know, we do a lot of different coatings to make it really efficient, all energy star appliances. Those are things that are like not super impressive the way they were ten years ago. One of the things that we're excited to do here is that we are doing a greener concrete mix with less Portland cement, so less clinker. That's something that I feel like has been pretty cutting edge. One thing that we love to do that we were unable to do here based on the groundwater is infiltrative stormwater treatment that, you know, potentially recharges aquifers. Can't do that here, but that's, you know, that's part of the ethos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The next one is Mr. Davies, please.
Thank you, vice chair. So can you comment on the waiver you're asking for on DeGyn not having doors facing that way? It seems like the door is facing the back of the lot, but yeah, I'd just love to hear your commentary on it.
Absolutely. So, you know, this is one of those things that is, we, we can be flexible either way, and that's part of what we would love to hear from the planning commission. So, you know, one of the things that staff just mentioned is that the material on DeGyn on the ground floor is stucco, and that could easily be the same brick that we're proposing along Stewart if the planning commission is interested in seeing that wrapped. One of the things that we kind of prioritized when laying this out, because again, as Julia mentioned, it is an efficient site, right? So we wanted to get landscaping where we could. And so having less sort of cuts through that landscape area was the priority. Now, one thing that we could absolutely do is have those two end homes have front doors off of DeGyn. To do that, we would need a waiver to encroach just on the ground level, about five feet into the setback for a porch element. So again, totally happy to defer to the commission on how you'd like to see it, but each lever kind of pulls another thing. So let us know what you'd like.
I'm personally okay with it. I think an issue that comes up with, with townhomes pretty regularly, especially when they have small children, is like being able to, the, the fact that it's open out to the street is inconvenient for families with small children on letting them out and play and, and so on. So if, if the opening, I should say, if the front doors are a little away from the guy, that doesn't bother me. I just wanted to hear what you had to say on it. Would you provide a little bit of color on the, the density bonuses you will be pursuing on this? We have a few more people here. I think they're here for the general hearing, but we're used to dealing with it up here on the dais, but maybe the public's not used to understanding the limits of planning commission's discretion.
Certainly. So do you want to start and I'll fill in? Sure.
So we are currently at a fifteen percent affordability level, which means that four of our units will be sold at deed restricted and sold at moderate affordability income levels. We are not currently proposing to utilize the extra density that we could be getting here. But what that means, because we're providing the fifteen percent affordable, is that we can get one concession and unlimited waivers to some of the objective standards.
And if I may speak to a couple of the types of waivers that we're requesting. So one of the requests is to have a reduced setback on our western boundary. That really allows us to have that larger landscape area on the east side, which I think is more important. We're adjacent to a parking lot currently. Another, another density bonus waiver that we've requested is on heights. So I think, you know, our buildings, we, we've done thirty five foot buildings before, but they really feel like flat roofs, where they kind of require flat roofs to be able to meet that height requirement. And I feel like the traditional architecture that you see north of this project down the street with the traditional gabled roof is something that I thought maybe felt more like the neighborhood. So again, we're happy to make changes if that's what the commission would like to see. But those are some of the things that we're thinking of. Most of them are aesthetic and to fit the, the buildings into the envelope.
And just one final question. Are you planning for these to be for sale units?
Yes, these are all for sale.
All for sale units. Okay, I'll have more commentary after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. The next one is. Name, please.
Thank you. I had one question that was regarding the pedestrian circulation. So first, so I really do like the improvements to pedestrian circulation. Right now, this, I do walk in this area semi-frequently. I live. I live, I don't live close enough for it to be a conflict of interest problem, but I do live close enough that I do walk here fairly frequently. And this is, the Stewart Drive sidewalk gap is at one of the low-key nastiest sidewalk gaps in this part of the city. Like, especially if you're coming at it not from DeGyn, but from the other direction, the sidewalk just kind of stops dead, dead mid Stewart, and you either have to cross, run across three lanes of traffic, or you walk in the bike lane. I usually walk in the bike lane, but, well, I walk there frequently enough that I usually, that I can, that I usually avoid it, but I used to just end up walking in the bike lane. So I'm glad that your gap solving this, that the problem for basically your lot. But what I would like you to consider, and this is something I said almost exact, almost verbatim two weeks ago. But it's, this is somewhat different because it's a residential property and it's, you know, it's for ownership condominiums, but like, and state housing will dictate what I could or could not technically impose at the public hearing, but like the, but what I would like you to consider is like a condition of approval or some kind of agreement that basically says for the kind of thing in the corner, in the opposite corner on Stewart Drive that abuts the adjacent property is like right now your sidewalk kind of ends a bit before the property line, and right now that's fine, because we can't close that sidewalk gap until the property next to you redevelops. But what I would ask you to consider is like, again, some kind of condition of approval that basically says, this is fine now, but when the, but if slash when the next prop, the property next to it redevelops, and that one is also, and that has the same zoning, that's I T R, that's an I T R three property as well, that the sidewalks, essentially the sidewalk gap gets filled in at that, at that time. So again. So again, I'm cool with this now, but I don't want to have that little strip of sidewalk gap in like thirty years, basically.
We, we can check with Public Works and see if there was a rationale for the gap. But if there's not, then we'll just fill it. We can just build it to the property line. I, I don't see why we would stop.
I'm cool with that too. I mean, I am cool with that too, but like.
I mean, we're, we're out there. Ten more feet of sidewalk is like, let's do it. Yeah.
The, the property, the one we had two weeks ago was actually a little weirder because there was like, the property was actually in the middle of like a traffic island. So they didn't have the sidewalk gap filled on just that little traffic island. But yeah, like the one thing I, I know that abuts the redwood tree that you want to preserve. And I also want to keep the redwood tree. So, you know, I, I'm hoping there isn't a conflict there. But I would like to see the sidewalk gap filled if possible.
Explore that. And we can also propose a temporary condition that goes around the, I mean, I don't want to undermine a redwood tree either, but we'll, we'll look at that.
Yeah, just, but just, it's something I just keep my eye on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Uh, next one is Mr. Commissioner Figoni.
Hello. Thanks for your presentation. I have a question. So, um, it looks like in building three, you have three accessible units. Can you tell me a little more about those? What, what makes them ADA accessible? What, are they different from the other units?
Absolutely. So, um, our accessibility will follow the California building code requirements and then any other applicable laws. My understanding from our architect is that in addition to all of the required clearances and ground floor living spaces, that there are different heights for counters. There are different, I, I think there are different strobes as well for fire. There are a bunch of different items that the CBC requires that we take into play. They do not have elevators. These are three-story townhomes. And where we've had to retrofit them, um, when a buyer is looking for an accessible home, we've included a chairlift as part of the, as part of the build. Correct.
So on, on the chair, I think, so on the chair, you have the, um, will you have the electrical close by so people can plug it in easily? Or do they have to?
Yes. No, it should, it should be really straight. Like when you're building this in at the get-go, rather than doing a retrofit, it should feel very seamless. I can definitely get more information on that for the formal meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, that's something very interesting. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for, um, thank you for putting attention to that. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry. So you said all the units are to sell, are going to be sold, correct? So, um, what I feel that they're going to be expensive. And I see like a lot of similar units. So how do they express themselves like, because these are going to be expensive? And if they want to have their own little bit identity, it looks like it's going to be difficult because they don't have any wall or space or like, you know, they're, they're, I'm sure there will be HOA, so they will maintain the things. But just curious that because they look very similar, all of them, all the units. So if you have any answers to your design consideration, and then second one, I'll add the, the questions along with it. You also have artificial turf that is in the, your open space. So I would say that that's kind of gets hot in barrier here. It's like good for the San Francisco pool, but it's like very hard to walk onto it. So I would reconsider that. So anyway, I would wait for the answer.
Absolutely. Um, okay. So I'll start with the artificial turf. One of the things that we've done throughout projects in California is we've started, like, we have to use M-Wheelo guidelines. And there are certain dimensions that you have to meet in order to be able to use true grass, like real, real turf. The artificial turf we've used in the past has been a higher quality turf that doesn't have a lot of that rubberized product in there and doesn't create the heat. I can get specifics on what the kind is. We could also remove the artificial turf and do native grasses that would meet the M-Wheelo requirements. So I'm happy to, to do that if that's something that the commission is interested in.
So in our city, like we always, every project, we have a whole group of people. They, they are like group of native society. And so I get constantly emails from them. So just wanted, like, they will have comments.
Yeah.
So just, it's up to you. If you have a better products, I mean, that's great. If, we would love to know. But yeah, so I'll keep, leave it up to you guys.
Yeah, we can, um, we can also provide optionality in the packet that allows the planning commission to give us direction at the formal hearing. And we'll just take it as a condition on which one you'd like to see. So we'll, we'll do that. And then to speak to the question on differentiation. So these are townhome style condos. So they do live vertically. And let me know if I'm not answering your question. I think I got it. The reason we condominiumize them is not because they're stacked flats. It's because it's very hard to have an efficient monolithic solar array in a mansard roof space, especially with all the California shading requirements. So by having these condos condominiumized, you can have your neighbor's solar panels over your roof. However, the way they live should feel more like attached single family. So what we tried to do on the elevations, like if you, if you take a look at Stewart Drive, and I don't know if we can put the, the slide up, um, Wendy, but what we tried to do is we tried to create different materials and colors per home. So you can say, I live in the brown townhome on the left versus I live in the white townhome on the right, or I live in the gray one in the middle with the brick, right? So you can tell like, this is my front door and I have the, the three stories that align with my front door.
And I hope that they will probably have some plants like outside their entrance or something, maybe. I'm just assuming. And then last question was about, um, you have the solar, uh, the, all the solar panels on the roof. And there is no staircase. So the access will be like, when the serviceman comes, it's like they come with the ladder or you have any access?
No, there are access hatches in each of the homes. And then the HOA has the right to access solar through, like there, there are cross easements on this. But the idea is to take the aesthetic of having solar out of public view. So you get the benefit of it, but you're not really looking at it. I go back and forth because I kind of like seeing the solar panels. But I feel like what we hear more is that people don't want to see them.
So the access to the solar panels on the roof, um, so we'll, how will you, servicemen will go there?
Oh, it's through, every, every home has a hatch to the roof.
Okay.
Every, every single home. And so there's no exterior ladder.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
These are the questions. Yeah. So is anybody, okay, so we know our questions from our, my fellow commissioners. So now I'll go ahead and open the public comment on this, this item. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. And I will call on members on the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants, but we don't have anybody to speak on this item. So, um, uh, does anyone, okay, so do you have anybody?
We have no speaker card.
Thank you so, so much. Okay, so we don't have. So that's, uh, does for this item, correct? Oh, I will call on members to the public participating. I think we did that on partici- do we have anybody remote?
We have no remote speakers as well.
So that's, um, so I think that's, does for this item and we are, excuse me. I'm going to, not, okay. I did, she said we don't have anybody. Okay, so. Okay, so speakers, okay, so. One second, I'll close, I'll close the public comment and, um, so I don't get it now. So that means now I can, I'm like, sorry, I'm new. So I can. Oh, you have. For the, this item? Oh, so that was the question to the applicant. So now applicants has extra minutes to speak. I, I'm sorry, I'm just, these are my new, so I'm just following the procedure. So anyway, so now we will have, let me see, I'm kind of following the. Okay, I'll close the public comments and now, my commissioners will have comments on this item. So I will open for it. And first, Mr. Davies, please.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, thank you to the city planner and the applicant. I, I'm not going to comment on the aesthetics as long as it follows the rules that we have. But it's, if it's compliant, it's compliant. I have a hard time matching the colors of my clothes, so, um, I'll, I'll leave that there. I guess for the public hearing, I'd love to hear about the, the water management. If the water table is, is very high, um, how that's going to be handled? With sea level rise, the water table certainly not getting any lower in this area, right? And also this is a superfund area all over the, all over the place. So it'd be great to hear how that is also going to be handled. I have every confidence that, that your plans will be compliant. We, the planning commission doesn't have a lot of discretion on this as long as you're following the rules. I do really appreciate the environmental focus. That seems to be the largest unit fire in the city politically. Everybody's green and, um, uh, my bigger interest is in getting this done as quickly as possible, right? I know we just rezoned this parcel, I want to say the end of last year. And seeing a development proposal in front of us within a year is heartening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next one is, uh, Mr. Payne.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Davis just said. The other thing I'd just like to add is there was some question about the lay, the, some of the unit layouts, and I'll say that my preference, that it's not a super strong preference and I would have to go down the giant list of city policies to make sure I'm not, and whatever the giant list of city policies says is what takes precedence over pers- my personal opinions, I will just flag that immediately. I didn't pull up the, I didn't go for this. I didn't like go through the loot and the, the general plan and look through big list of policies. But I, I trust that staff has done this and I trust that we will have that in front of us for the public hearing. But like the, but my personal preference is generally that if we can kind of avoid breaking up open spit, uh, like landscaped space, that kind of thing, it's generally, it's generally better. I know that one. One waiver we get a lot, we see a fair amount is basically about, about shade, shading, about amount of open space. And those waivers always really depress me because it's like, we are making this, we are, because it's, we are making this site less environmentally friendly. And I do, and I, I always, and I, my preference is always if we can kind of keep the, keep the, keep the green space together, keep thing, keep, keep this kind of the open pave, the open pavement that radiate, that just radiates right up to the sky at a minimum. That's always preferable. So that's just kind of my thought on that. But yeah, other than that, I, I still think it would be nice to actually have a density bonus project one of these days that actually goes over, that, that actually increases the density. I am pleased to see that this is building to the, to the set density. It's not what, it's, it's twenty, it's zoned for twenty-four units per acre and this would be twenty-four units per acre. So I, uh, I, that makes me happy. So just, so thank you for that. And I will, and that's all I have for now. Again, again, there's a lot to be said about the, about like the superfund remediation, et cetera, et cetera. But as Steph has said, that will be for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Payne. Uh, next Commissioner Figoni, please.
I think my, um, the only main concern I have is, um, as we start to move residential into what was industrial and commercial areas, the lack of sidewalk is, is concerning to me, especially for those with disabilities trying to get around. And in general, when you, what I've noticed is when you build housing in what was industrial areas, people come out and walk around. They don't want to stay in their house all day. And then you start walking around in unsafe areas. So my concern is long-term for the city. You know, you're not addressing that right, right now. It's kind of an afterthought because you're letting these developments occur. But really, we need to think about this if we're going to start, you know, utilizing what was once industrial for residential. I really think we need to, to look at the sidewalks and making sure it's safe for people to go and walk, you know, with strollers, scooters, dogs, whatever. But when you go around these areas, you see we have a sidewalk and it stops, then it goes in this little strip. She's very unsafe. And then they're gonna, you know, gonna want to start, start to get bike lanes in there too. How are you going to do that? So I think these are things we need to start thinking about and making sure that those things are planned for and put in place. It's, it's not the developers' responsibility. I don't believe the city needs to look at this. But as we start to encro- encroach into these areas, which were once industrial, they were never really designed for people walking around because people went to work, parked their car, went into their office, did their job, and then they left. They didn't really walk around much. So I'm just bringing that to attention that I see this as a potential problem long-term. But other than that, I like the development. It looks very nice, well thought out and, and designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else has comments? So I think at this time, uh, the meeting is adjourned at six forty-three. And we will start planning commission meeting at seven, seven PM. Thanks.
Good evening. Let's call to order the planning commission meeting of October 27th at 7:00 PM. The city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sanovale prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents and we are committed to creating a culture of belonging where members of our diverse community feel included, safe, and respected. This planning commission meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by the commission for consent, calendar, or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within the commission's authority, generally referred to as within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a commission's, excuse me, if a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the planning commission agenda. Use the show captions button to view captions on Zoom. Comments on matters not on the agenda must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close the public hearing on the agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to the time period set for public comments for agenda item, which will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted for the cities on the city's website and the planning commission meeting agenda. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
With allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic by which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording officer, may we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Segura?
Present.
Chair Iglesias?
Present.
Commissioner Figoni?
Present.
Commissioner Saroni?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Present.
Commissioner Pine?
Present.
Commissioner Shukla?
Present.
We have seven commissioners present.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to oral communications. This is the public's opportunity to address the commission on topics not listed on tonight's agenda. This section is limited to 15 minutes and may be extended or continued after the public hearing's general business section of the meeting. Individuals may only speak once during oral communications. The planning commission meeting is a limited public forum and the commission can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral communication must be limited to matters within the commission's authority. Again, that's the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are outside the commission's subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. This allows the commission to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and protects the rights of other speakers. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. And speakers will have three minutes to speak. So before we, if there is any interest in participating in oral communications, just know this is not related to either the items that we have already on our agenda for tonight. This is if you have something separate. That being said, does anybody want to speak under oral communications before we hear from remote speakers? All right, seeing none. Because of the nature of remote communications, speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Therefore, the speakers are warned to limit their comments to subjects that fall within the commission's authority to decide or take action. Recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on oral communications?
We have one hand raised from Himanshu Sethi. I will allow Himanshu the floor to speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we have you.
Yeah, just a question. This is regards to the email that Jeffrey Kuchinata sent out. Can I speak on that or is that later?
I'm not sure what email that is.
I believe this is regarding agenda item three.
Okay, so if this is regarding Lakewood commercial redevelopment, that'll actually be spoken to later.
Thanks.
Thank you. We have no further hands raised, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. I will go ahead and close oral communications. This brings us to our consent calendar. I will go ahead and open public comment on consent calendar items. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. And again, speakers will have three minutes to speak. For consent calendar items, this is very specific to items on our agenda about previous meeting notes. This is again is not related to either the business items. That being said, does anybody want to speak on a consent calendar item before we hear from remote speakers? Seeing none, recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
We do not, Chair.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close public comment and I'll ask for a motion for my colleagues. Commissioner Pine?
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent calendar submitted.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Recording officer, please connect a vote.
Motion passes with seven yeses.
Thank you. And this brings us to general business. So for tonight, we have two general business items. The first item, which is 250987, is about a tree removal permit. And the second item is 25-0975, related to a special development permit to redevelop in Lakewood Village area. Tonight, because we have a majority of folks that are here for the second item, I'm going to go ahead and move the second item to the first. This does not require a vote. However, I want to give commissioners a chance to react. Otherwise, it'll pass by general consent. And Commissioner Davis? Oh, sorry, was that from?
No, my hand just didn't go down.
Got it. All right. So then this passes by general consent and our first item for this evening is now going to be related to, it's going to be number 25-0975. It is a proposed project related to an application on a 5.28 acre site. It's a special development permit to redevelop three noncontiguous lots. With one, a new two-story commercial building totaling 23,104 square feet on a commercial lot. And second, 101 new market rate townhouse units distributed among 15 three-story buildings on the residential lots. And the location is 1119-1163 Lawrence Expressway, is their staff report.
Good evening. Yes, hi, I'm Jeff Cuccinotta, senior planner, project planner for this project. We have a staff presentation, but we will not be presenting tonight. But I'm here just to make a few quick comments. The applicant for this project has requested that the public hearing be continued to the November 24th, the regularly scheduled hearing on November 24th. Staff is working with the applicant to finalize a few specifics on the conditions of approval, specifically related to the proposed commercial building and the phasing of the building within the project. And for that reason, we were recommending the continuance to the November 24th hearing to give staff and the applicant enough time to button up the details on the conditions.
All right, thank you. Now is an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions of city staff. First, we have Commissioner Pine.
Thank you. I know this was mentioned in the email, but I just want to get it out here on the record in the public hearing. Can staff confirm that this will, that this tonight will not count against the public here, the total number of public hearings permitted under SB 330?
Yeah, that was our, we confirmed that with the applicant, that the applicant would not count this towards one of their five permitted meetings under SB 330.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Next, we have Commissioner Saroni.
Thanks, Chair. I'm wondering if we can, if I can suggest another date besides the 24th. There's a lot of community interest in this item that is Thanksgiving week and a lot of people may be not around. So I'd like to suggest another date, possibly the next meeting, which is what, December 8th or something? Or depending on, you know, other items that may be in the queue, but.
Yeah, I think the, well, I can't speak about the December 8th hearing. I'd have to look at that. I think the options are to approve moving, continuing the hearing to the 24th or to a date uncertain. I have not checked with the applicant if the December 8th date works for them, so I can't answer that right now.
So it sounds like a date uncertain would be would be better. That gives staff full flexibility and.
And we'll have a chance as a commission to make that recommendation as well and to vote, make that motion. Not yet, but if.
Right, right.
Commissioner Saroni, did you, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Pine.
Yep, sorry, this is in response to Commissioner Saroni's question. I just wanted to also ask staff and if staff doesn't have this now, we can do this after the public hearing. But would there, basically, would there be any adverse effects from continuing to a date uncertain? I know there's like potential for like re-noticing and such, but also in this case, I think it's very important that everybody in the neighborhood have, be noticed of the correct date. So I'm not entirely sure I would see that as a negative, so just throwing that out, that one out there for staff.
Well, if it's a date uncertain, then we would have to do re-noticing. But if we did a date certain, then we wouldn't need to. We would still give courtesy email and notice in our channels that we have, but we would send out another mailer if we did uncertain.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other commissioner hands at this point, and since there isn't an applicant presentation, I'm going to go ahead and open the public forum for this item. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on the staff's recommendation to move, to have this moved to either a date certain or a date uncertain. Participants will be given three minutes to speak on this particular item. I will allow members participating in public first to speak and then we'll move to remote speakers. First person, speaker cards, if you have them and you submitted them, you'll have a chance now. But as a reminder, the applicant isn't here yet and the staff has not presented the plan yet to the commission, so we will be fairly limited. So to that end, I would encourage you to limit your comments to your opinion about the continuation. First person we have is Hillel Hachlili.
Hi, my name is Hillel Hachlili and I live in the Lakewood neighborhood, just behind the shopping center for about 20 years. And for many years, we suffer from very loud music at night, like from 10:00 PM until 2:00 AM in the morning because there is a nightclub in this shopping center. And anything that we try to talk to the owner or something, nothing helps. It really, it really don't care for the many single-family house leaving behind. Even calling the police doesn't help because police come to there. So they reduce little bit and after half an hour, police goes away. They're turning back up. So what, my purpose of thing is to make sure that on the new, on the new project, on the commercial area of the project, nightclub will not be allowed. So if somebody tried to get a business that create noise, he cannot get permission to have a nightclub on the new project. That's a hopeful, like 20 years we didn't have. Now with new project, maybe. When I ask, how come you have nightclub so close to residential? They said, this is what they called grandfathering permission. So it's from many years ago and they cannot disable it. I'm not sure. So my purpose is to have a restriction that no nightclub or anything that create loud noise could be on the new project so close to residential area. That's pretty much my point.
All right, thank you very much. Recording officer, do we have any other speaker cards?
No other speaker cards, thank you.
All right. Anyone else would like to speak in person? Now is your opportunity.
And Chair, if I may, real quick, just so the public comment on the continuance is really just limited to the content of the continuance, not of the, the nature of the project. That would be for the, when we have the actual hearing on the, on the project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll move to remote speakers. And as a reminder to those that just heard, the, the information that's being shared, it's limited to, your comments are limited to the continuance and not the nature of the project. Recording officer, do we have remote speakers wishing to speak?
Yes, we do. I will allow Himanshu Sethi the floor to speak first.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your time. I wanted to respectfully request that the continued hearing for the Lakewood project not be scheduled for October 24th, sorry, November 24th, as that falls during Thanksgiving week. As Commissioner Saroni mentioned, many residents will be traveling or unavailable and, and holding the hearing then would limit the community's participation. And this project is of significant importance to North Sunnyvale and people really want to be involved in discussion. I'd ask that the hearing be moved to a later date when more members of the public can attend and provide meaningful input. Thank you for considering this request and for your continued work on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Vanessa Scudder.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to agree with what the previous speaker had said. I think that this is a really important project and the community would really appreciate having the opportunity to participate. And, you know, the, I know there's going to be a lot of comment in the upcoming meeting about the nature of the project and what people want about, from the project itself. And I think that just if we want to have positive public sentiment towards the project, it would really be beneficial for the community to be able to participate. So I'd like to agree in just asking that we can have the meeting on a date that's not during the Thanksgiving holiday and preferably not during other holiday events. And that's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker doesn't have a name, but it's Samsung SM-S936U1.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Aubrey Thomas. I represent the Thomas family. We live exactly a block from the construct, soon-to-be construction site. I agree with my fellow community members to have the date moved to later in December for other families to be able to participate and share their concerns and voices during the next meeting.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Zee C.
Hello, my name is Zadori Katrell. I apologize for not putting my name in there, but I appreciate this consideration for the hearing to be moved to a later date, which is not during the week of Thanksgiving. So the November 24th date would be a difficult time for many people to be able to participate in the discussion. So thank you for taking that into consideration and thinking about moving the hearing to a future date in December or later potentially. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Larry Chan.
Hello. Thank you very much for your time. I'd like to just express my appreciation for Commissioner Saroni's suggestion that we not hold the meeting when, during the week of Thanksgiving and just adding my voice to echo what my neighbors are saying about having as many members of the community participate as possible. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Benjamin Dawson.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ben Dawson. I'm a seven-year Lakewood resident. I would also echo what my neighbors are saying, that it would be preferable to hold the discussion in a week that is not Thanksgiving week. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no further hands raised.
All right, thank you very much. And seeing no other participants, at this point, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and I will ask for discussion or motion for my colleagues. Commissioner Davis.
I'm ready to make a motion if we don't have anyone raising their hands for discussion.
Please.
I move that we continue the hearing to a date uncertain. I think that's all we need to say.
Thank you. And Commissioner Pine.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Davis, your motion?
Yeah, we've heard from multiple residents, Thanksgiving week is just a bad week for a hearing. Lots of people are going to be gone. I think if we were to do it to, like, it would look like we were kind of sneaking it through. So in the interest of inclusion and transparency, it could be a week earlier, it could be a week later, just not the week of Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Pine.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, and I second that. I'd also like to say that I did a very quick cursory holiday check and I don't think December 8th actually hits any major holiday, any major holidays that would cause people to miss the hearing unless somebody's taking like the entire month of December off, in which case, sorry. But, but like, but, but the, and I apologize if I did miss a holiday and I was Googling this in real time. So I obviously passed across clear with staff and applicant schedules, but I do think that would be quite reasonable date to continue this too, if that, if that worked. I don't, I'm not, I don't have any particular, I'm not, I'm not supporting this issue because I'm trying to like push this project way off down the road or any sneaky tricks, but I do agree with all the comments of doing this Thanksgiving week is a bad day. I would also like to say something that I'd hope would be communicated to the applicant is that something I was planning on is that attachment 7, which is the applicant's justify, well, I'm going to actually air quotes this, justification for waivers. And the reason I'm air quoting it is because I was actually very frustrated that the attachment 7 we got from the applicant did not actually attempt, did not actually justify the waivers that they were seeking. It was just basically, these are our waivers. We say these are, this is physically precluding the, physically precluding, but it did not provide any, any specifics whatsoever of how, of how, of why they were necessary, of why this, why the waivers were necessary to physically preclude the project design. So I would just ask that when this comes back to us, the applicant actually provide justification for their waivers because what I was going to do tonight is when the applicant got up, I was just going to go one by one with the waivers and ask orally for a justification. And I would rather not put everybody through this. So I would appreciate if we, when this came back, we could get a written justification from the applicant. If I, if we don't, we will have, I will have to ask the applicant 22 oral questions and again, that would be annoying. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Seeing no other commissioner hands, the chair will be supporting the motion. I think that the community has made their voice loud and clear. And with that, recording officer, please connect a vote.
The motion passes with seven yeses.
And playing officer, what is the fate of this?
The, the item is continued to a date uncertain and we will re-notice the neighborhood once we have a date figured out.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, this brings us to our next item for tonight, which is Item 25-0987. It's a proposed project appeal of a decision by the Director of Community Development denying a tree removal permit for a 21-inch diameter fruitless pear tree in front yard. The location is 385 Redondo Terrace. Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Cindy Homm, staff planner for this item. As a quick overview, a tree removal permit was submitted back in August and this is for the removal of a fruitless pear tree located in the front yard that measures 21 inches in diameter. The tree removal permit was denied based on the fact that it didn't meet the tree removal criteria established in our zoning code. On August 25th, the property owner did appeal the denial to the Planning Commission. As context for the project, the project site is located at 385 Redondo Terrace. It is built with an existing two-story home and surrounded by residential uses. The photo to the right is the existing tree that's located in the front yard in subject of this appeal. The photos in this slide is provided by the appellant. This shows the large limb that had broken off of the tree that has fallen across the front yard. The appellant cites the following reasons for the basis of the appeal. The tree presents a danger to property owners and adjacent neighbors as well as any users of the private sidewalk. The tree has overgrown the front yard. And lastly, based on research, the fruitless pear species is noted for exhibiting structural weakness and can be invasive. Based on staff analysis and assessment of the tree, again, it doesn't meet the city's criteria for removal. Generally, a true removal permit is granted if the tree is dead, showing serious disease, causing damage to property and/or posing a significant risk to people. Based on the site assessment, we also noted that the tree is relatively healthy and has like another 25 years of life expectancy. The tree also can be maintained with proper pruning and root care. The tree, the city arborist did recommend pruning and thinning out the canopy and also enhancing the soil so that it prevents any disease and also the root structure. Lastly, the fruitless pear tree is not banned in California. It does have a watch rating. What that watch rating means is that it's a species that is not yet established but is noted to be, or can be significantly invasive. That concludes staff's staff report and staff recommends a trended one, recommending to uphold staff's decision to deny the tree removal permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. At this point, commissioners have an opportunity to ask staff questions. Thank you very much for the presentation. At this point, Commissioners have an opportunity to ask staff questions. Commissioner Segura.
My question is, is it known to us or by the applicant that the roots are disturbing the house or the house foundation in any ways?
Good evening, Commissioners. There wasn't noted to have any large root damage to hardscape of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other Commissioner hands, the only question I have is, in order to meet the requirement, it, and this is just looking to confirm this, one of the following has to be met, that the tree's diseased or damaged and/or the tree represents potential hazard to people, structures, or trees, other trees, and/or trees basically sound, but then several things about economic and sound conditions, which I don't think is what we're talking about. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. And since there are no other Commissioner questions, there's one applicant, and they'll have ten minutes provided at the beginning of the public hearing to address the planning commission, along with five minutes at the end of the public hearing. Is there an applicant presentation? Is an applicant present?
Hi Kay, you appear to be on mute. Thank you.
No, unfortunately, you're still on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My concerns with the tree is that this branch did break off without any high wind or rain. My arborist, when the tree was put in by the builder, I didn't have a choice when the house was built. And the gardener at that point said that tree is going to cause you problems later on. The branches are known to break off for no particular reason. And we have looked after the tree for thirty years. It has been pruned and cut back, and that only stimulates more growth. So the tree had got really large. But the day that the branch broke off, luckily, it fell on my property. It didn't fall on the road or the sidewalk where we have mothers with strollers and people with their cars. It literally, the branch was big enough that it could have killed somebody. And I don't want to be responsible for that. I don't want my house insurance to be responsible for a death or severe injury or injury to a car. And what we would like to do is to remove the tree because in our eyes and the arborist's eyes, the tree is dangerous. Other people in the neighborhood that had that particular tree planted in their yard have already removed them. There are two other species in the neighborhood that are much smaller and have, the, the people owning the homes have left them intact, pruned them regularly, but they haven't got as big as this tree. And what we'd like to do, because of the state of California in a drought, we would like to landscape the front so that it was sustainable, where we don't have to have a watering system. The tree roots have completely obliterated the watering system. So now to keep the HOA happy, we have to hand water the grass. Because as soon as it turns brown, the HOA turn around and say, do something about your grass. It's untidy and the neighborhood doesn't like it. So we're hand watering because the roots of the tree have completely abolished any of the irrigation system. So my concern is people walking their dogs out with strollers and people driving by, that one of those branches does fall and does cause injury. That's, that's my issue with the tree. The back garden has many trees. I'm not against trees. I like trees. But the builder should never have put that particular species in the front yard of a house in this neighborhood. They should be restricted to open spaces and parks. It's the wrong tree for the wrong place. And I don't know what else to explain to you the reasons for needing that tree to be removed. It is, in our eyes, a danger and also to our neighbors, to the point that nobody walks along our sidewalk anymore. They all walk out in the road, and they've all expressed the opinion that to them, the tree is dangerous, and they're afraid that another branch will spontaneously break off. With the winter coming, and we do have high winds here some winters and heavy rain, we could lose more branches and have a serious injury. Okay?
All right. Do you have another six minutes if you'd like that, but you don't have to.
I don't think, unless you want to ask me questions.
We'll do that as well.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you so much for your presentation. At this point, the planning Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask some clarifying questions. First, we have Commissioner Pine.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for your presentation. Just one question, which was, well, one, it's going to be one question to you and one question to staff, but what the, you mentioned you have had the tree pruned in the past. When was the most recent time you had it pruned?
Last year, because another issue with the tree, Liberty Mutual, because there was a branch that was slightly on the roof, they sent a drone over. I was not aware of that. I got a letter telling me that they would no longer give me house insurance because they deemed the tree in the front yard was a danger and that there was a branch that was over the roof that they felt could cause property damage. After that, that branch was trimmed. I called Liberty Mutual back and said, they go, oh, no, you just get one chance. We send the drone over. We see a problem. We won't renew your house insurance. And it took a long time to find a company that would. But yes, we do have the tree trimmed regularly. I have to be careful how I trim it. If I make it too ugly, then the how, the homeowners association tell us the tree is unsightly. It's, it's a balance.
Thank you. A question to staff, and feel free to answer me later in the hearing if you don't, because this is my request, if you don't have this at your fingertips. I, do we have any records of, do we have any records about other tree removal actions being taken in this neighborhood? And I don't know if they necessarily.
If you were to drive the neighborhood, every house when it was built, had a tree put on their front yard, either in front of the window or by the sidewalk. Okay, now if you drive in our neighborhood, you will find that people have put in, have taken their trees out and have put in a sustainable landscaping for low, low voltage usage.
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt. The question is for city staff.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I'm not doubting, I'm actually, I'm not doubting your testimony. I'm just trying to get a sense of if previous trees, we had previous, previous tree removal applications approved, like what the.
I'm being, I'm being, I'm being told, yes, I'm being told by some of my neighbors, oh, we told the city that the tree was too big for the front yard, that the roots were coming out.
Ma'am, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but this is a question.
They allowed us to take the tree out.
Ma'am, please allow the city to respond.
Staff would need to do research to gather that information for you.
Okay, if there's any way it could be done quickly, I would, I, because I do, because if, if the appeal, if the findings are able to be met for other trees in the vicinity, that would, I think, be a significant factor. So if there's any way to do that quickly, it would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Next, we have Commissioner Davis.
A question for staff first. If, if we uphold the denial of the, of the application or deny the appeal, is that a final decision or can it be appealed to City Council?
It's a final decision.
It's a final decision. And I'm looking here, there are eight possible criteria for, for granting the appeal that would grant the license. And so to do that, we would need to find that one of the, at least one of these criteria applied.
That is correct.
Okay, and I, I'm curious. I, I look at that tree and I see really heavy pruning bills. You know, I spend a few thousand dollars every couple of years pruning my trees. I, I can't imagine how much it would take, how much it would cost to remove it safely. Does any either city staff or perhaps the applicant have any idea of, of what we're.
I was quoted from my arborist that he would remove it for eighteen hundred dollars.
Oh, that's, that's actually missing a zero from what I expected.
Oh, sorry.
But I should get your arborist contact information, but.
That's what he told me. And when the branch broke off, he actually came out and removed that branch for me. Because it was, well, we couldn't put the trash cans out because it was hindering that, that route to the road.
Okay, and for city staff again, if, if the appeal is granted and the permit is issued, and they, I believe two trees have to be planted in its place. But anywhere on the property, it does not have to be in the front yard. Okay, so.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Davis. Next, we have Commissioner Fegoni.
I had a couple of questions. One is for staff. How much does the tree permit cost? To, how much does it cost for the owner to cut the tree down?
It is about three hundred something dollars. Let me find the exact amount. Just one moment.
And then for the owner, hi, roughly, could you estimate how much you've spent in the lifetime of the tree in the maintenance on it? Just a rough ballpark, how much you think you spent?
The tree is, has been trimmed about every two years from mild trimming to, you know, more vigorous trimming. And it's like a thousand dollars every time that tree is, and the permit for me this time was four hundred, and it was two hundred for the appeal.
The appeal, okay. So you would guess you have five thousand, seventy-five hundred dollars into this tree about?
Oh, more than that. The tree is thirty years old, and I've lived here since the house was built. For the first few years, it didn't need pruning. It was just a really small tree. But with the pruning, it has caused the tree to get even sturdier.
So you think that number is closer to how much you think you spent roughly?
Ten thousand, ten thousand or more.
Thousand more, okay. How much, can, may I ask, the insurance company that dropped you and you had to give new insurance, did that cost you more in house insurance due to the tree?
I can't, I, I don't have the figures with me, but it, but the, it wasn't so much the money, it was the uncertainty that we would be able to find a company to insure us when you have to tell them that you've been denied by another company.
So the fact the tree did cost you more money insurance and uncertainty that you may not be able to insure your house?
Exactly, because as soon as you say, why, they ask you, why are you changing insurance companies? And you have to be honest, you say, because Liberty Mutual won't insure me anymore. They go, why? You tell them, and then some companies don't even want to look at it.
Okay.
So luckily, in the end, farmers said, yes, with an increased premium, we will give you house insurance.
Okay, but there's no guarantee farmers might eventually drop you if they see that the tree is unsafe.
Yes, if they come by next, yeah, exactly. When they, when the renewal comes around next year, it, I don't know. I don't know what the outcome will be then.
Okay.
And they are allowed by law to just not renew the policy. It's, it's their prerogative to do that.
Correct, yes, it's a common issue.
Yeah. And they don't warn you, so you can't do anything because last year it was a drone that came over. They admitted that.
Gotcha, okay. How much spaces between, I was looking at the picture, from where the tree is to your property, to the sidewalk? It looks like kind of a small area.
Oh, it's very, it's, it's six feet, maybe eight feet from the front door.
Okay.
And it's saying, and it's less than that to the sidewalk.
Got it.
So really, there is no way to trim the tree on the sidewalk side where there wouldn't be a branch overhanging the sidewalk. You wouldn't be able to treat, to trim the tree that way. There will always be a branch, a big branch liable to fall on the sidewalk if that branch should break.
Okay. And of course, I imagine your water bill has gone up because you have to water more because the tree suck up the water on the lawn. And so you have to keep the grass green due to your HOA commitments.
Yeah, the HOA doesn't, you know, they're sort of saying, why don't you just landscape that area? Take the grass out, you know, we can't, we can't remove the tree. The tree roots cover almost all of the grass area. It's very difficult to walk on the grass in some areas because of the size of the roots. And there is a break in our sidewalk coming up to the house, not on the public side, where the root has actually lifted the sidewalk, the walk space. There is a gap, but it's on outside, not the public side.
Okay, very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fegoni. Next, we have Vice Chair Shukla.
Thank you, Chair. Oh, I have a question for staff. If, do we have any ordinance when somebody cuts trees without permit? Do we charge them or like, how, what do we, how do we take care of that?
So we do have a, a tree ordinance, and generally, if they're in violation of like illegal pruning or illegal pruning or illegal removal, then there are penalties that they would have to pay. I also would like to come back to Commissioner Pine's question. So we did just look at our permit history within that neighborhood, and there's roughly around six permits. Mainly there for removal of ash trees, I believe, but there are six within that neighborhood.
So if I, I know that like some people have allergy in certain trees and they, they get permit in the Sunnywell, but do we, do we know, like, we charge, I mean, how do we, if, how do we find out the neighbor complaints if somebody cuts the tree without the permit? Is the neighbor complaints and maybe we can go and kind of do that kind of thing.
Correct. It's usually complaint driven, so our neighborhood preservation would receive a call citing that there is a potential for illegal tree removal. Then we would do inspection, and if it is found that it was done without permit, then we would basically cite them, and then they have to come in and legalize the tree removal.
Yeah, and also we don't have anything like when they, I, I heard that if they remove, if we get permit, they have to plant two trees. But there is no guarantee that those trees will survive or no check balances, correct?
So generally, our, our process is, once the tree removal is approved, they are given a tree replacement card. They're given ninety days to install that tree. They are responsible for returning that card to city staff, either by mail or email with their project planner. And then basically, they have complied with their permits. Okay, thank you.
Can I speak something?
Just one second. You'll have an opportunity. So Commissioners may ask you more questions, and you also have five more minutes. After we ask questions, you'll have five minutes to say whatever you'd like to say.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Shukla. Next, we have Commissioner Saroni.
Thanks, Chair. Is, is the city arborist here? Okay. This this does not look like a very big tree to me compared to other trees. Or I have a eucalyptus in my backyard that's about, it's. Or I have a eucalyptus in my backyard that's about, it's many times larger than this. And my next door neighbor has, I think, Monterey pines that are, are, again, many times larger than this. Um, and, I mean, there aren't any trees, are there, where the branches don't sometimes fall off? Uh, I, I didn't notice that, uh, the tree seems to be kind of severely, uh, well, pruned or really just chopped off at the top, which at least for my trees, the, uh, uh, the arborists who trim my trees, uh, which costs a lot of money every couple of years, uh, said that was the worst way to, to trim trees that they, you know, it grows back very fast and those, uh, those rapid growth pieces are very likely to fall off. They, they go in and they, uh, you know, they kind of thin out the tree rather than chopping off the top, so, which could be part of the problem, but, this just, uh, again, does not seem like, uh, that large a tree and they're, by this criteria, it seems like you'd have to be cutting down trees all over the city. Um, uh, so it, I have one more question, which is, uh, maybe not specific to this, but, uh, to the, to the whole pruning question. Um, so you can't remove a tree, but could you trim it to like six feet and say the tree is still there? Is there a criteria for that?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, it's very difficult when you prune a tree, um, outside of its structure, which is, uh, what is happening, it does have adverse reactions, so topping it is absolutely the worst thing you can do, but if you over prune it, it does force shoots to come out, which is what you see in the crown, there's multiple points. Um, the best thing to do is year after year slowly correctly pruning it. If you go over twenty percent of pruning of the canopy, it will force more, that's, it's counterintuitive to us because we think, oh, we need to reduce it as much as possible, but it, it forces it to grow more because you've reduced all of the height. Now it needs to make up for it to bring photos into this good energy. So it's just trying to make up for what you've taken away. The best thing you can do is slowly reduce it time by time and, like you said, thin it out. Uh, the tree is very healthy, um, it's a very large tree, does provide a lot of benefits to the community. Um, as, uh, as they said, there were six ash trees that were removed from the neighborhood. Um, this is a, um, this is a pear tree vastly different in size. Um, ash tree will go a hundred feet, will rip up concrete in houses. Um, this is about the max height that you're going to get with one of these trees, which is what you want. It's a very healthy, large tree. I mean, it has been overpruned, but, um, I do feel corrected pruning is the best action. All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Serrani. Next, we have Commissioner Segura.
Thank you, Chair. Um, my question is to staff, did you guys, uh, maybe offered a possibility, uh, to the applicant to maybe take the tree down but plant two or three other trees or mature trees? Was that an option?
Um, uh, because the tree did not fit the criteria for removal, uh, we did not support removing it. Uh, it's only in the event that a tree is approved for tree removal that we, they would have to install replacement trees based on the size that, of the tree that's being removed. So, uh, that is, that was not an option.
Okay, um, I have a question for you, the arborist. Uh, did you go out on site with this room? And, um, did you see really that the roots are all over and lifting the sidewalk? Or what is your observation?
Um, I mean, we saw that the tree was, um, of a good distance away from foundation enough where the canopy wasn't showing that it was uplifting or damaging the home itself. Um, to the sidewalk on the street side, we didn't see major damage or uplifting. Um, but there were some, you know, there's surface roots in the landscape. I mean, I think that's just a testament to the, the turf, like having shallow watering just increases shallow roots. Uh, so I think it's just a product of the time, um, but, yes.
Uh, the shallow roots can be, uh, treated and cut and, uh, so they can maintain their loan and, uh,
The roots themselves is difficult to prune. Um, it would take somebody, um, skilled enough to know how not to damage it because essentially you can cut a, a large artery and damage the tree without knowing it and then create a bigger risk. Um, let's say five, ten years later, you weren't paying attention and now it's fallen because it's lost its anchor. So, um, it, it's possible, but definitely not recommended.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Segura. All right, um, and since Zoom is acting up, I just ask, uh, all my Commissioners to check to make sure your hands are down unless you intend it to be up. Commissioner Fegoni, do you? Okay, um, so seeing no other, no other questions from, uh, Commissioners? I had a question and it was, as I look at this picture, um, and I, I see a branch that looks like it's not something I would want to drop on me or my car or anything that I care about. And it also looks like a healthy branch, like it's got grainy on it. Can you help me understand, um, what? I, is that normal for like a healthy branch like that to drop? And what, from your perspective, would be a standard where a tree would be a hazard? Very good question, thank you, Commissioner. Um, so, uh, it's called summer limb drop, summer limb failure. It's essentially when temperatures rise, um, the tree doesn't have as, it's essentially brittle and it falls. But what you have is a lot of rainfall in the year prior and then a large shoot of growth during spring. And without pruning it, without reducing the end weight, it just gets heavier and heavier. And so when the summer hits and the temperatures are rising, summer limb fall. Uh, it's not, it's not uncommon for this species of tree, um, but it's not uncommon for a lot of trees in our neighborhood. Um, camphers, stuff like that, so Chinese pistash. Um, and yes, it's, uh, it's summer limb failure. Okay, thank you. All right, um, with no other questions from Commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and now open to the public forum. Um, public hearing rather on this. Please submit a speaker card to the recording officer or raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on a telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. And speakers will have three minutes to speak. Um, recording officer, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not, Chair.
All right, uh, before we move to remote speakers, would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, uh, remote speakers are warned to limit their comments to the agenda item being considered. Speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. Recording officer, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, we do have one hand raised from Vanessa Scudder. I will allow Vanessa the floor to speak now.
Hi, I just wanted to say that it sounds like, hopefully you can hear me. It sounds like it would be a significant, um, ordeal for the homeowner to maintain the tree and the, the homeowner in order to make sure that the tree isn't having dangerous limbs would have to have knowledge that really is beyond your average citizen. So, um, I'm just wondering if the, the Commission can consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, and Chair, we have no further, oh, we have one other hand raised. Gail, you have the floor to speak next.
Hi, this is Gail. Thank you very much for having this discussion. Um, I really feel for this very articulate person, the applicant. She's dealt with this tree for thirty years. It's probably cost her ten thousand dollars. She's lost her insurance because of the tree. And I really think we should just allow her to, to, to chop down this particular tree, even though I understand it's, you know, all this trimming stuff, but this is very expensive for this nice person that's very articulate. And I agree with her that the tree should be removed. Perhaps she can put in a smaller tree somewhere else, but, you know, one tree. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time and thank you, Ms. Solomon, you're very articulate.
Thank you, Gail. Next, we will hear from Diane.
Hi, this is Diane. Um, as a wheelchair user, I'm concerned that the tree, uh, in future, she needs a ramp. She will not be able to have a ramp up to her house. That the tree will block the entrance. That's all.
Thank you, Chair. We have no further hands raised.
All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, Ms. Tsuyama, now you have five minutes. Uh, you can address any comments you heard, you can share any, uh, additional information, this is your time.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you all for your comments and for the, uh, the committee and also the arborist. Um, the tree has been trimmed at least every two years since the tree got to be a certain size, probably five years after we moved in. Um, it has got really large. There are large trees like that in the park and they're wonderful in the park and in open spaces. But for the size of the front yard, the tree is too big. I believe it's too big. Our neighbors believe it's too big. Other trees that were planted by the builder, some of them were the, the crepe laurels, which have a really small trunk. And this particular tree, and there are a couple more in the neighborhood, it's a sixty inch circumference, this tree, um, the trunk. And, um, it's very hard for the branches of that type of large tree not to be overgrowing either my driveway or the road or the sidewalk or coming back towards the house, which the insurance company doesn't like. Hopefully, I, I basically don't know what to do with the tree. Um, it's expensive to get it pruned. And I, the people that are pruning it are definitely experts in the field. They're not somebody that's coming in with a chainsaw and just cutting it to pieces. Um, I've had two different arborists, they both know what they're doing. And they keep the tree pruned the best way they can to make it as safe as possible. But there will always be branches over the sidewalk, over the road and over my driveway. And I would rather not be in a position of a branch breaking, injuring a child, a mother, a dog, a car. And then my home insurance being responsible to pay for that, that damage or the severity of the, of the injury. It is possible that somebody could die and I really don't want that responsibility as the homeowner. That's really all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. Um, at this point, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and I will ask for a discussion or motion for my colleagues. Vice Chair Shukla.
Thank you. Um, you know, I'm, uh, should I like discuss, like make a motion first or something? Uh, both, either both, or discussion or motion? Okay, so I would, um, I would, um, okay, I'm going to discuss first and then make motion. I, I think we, I've seen, I'm a tree promoter, like I love trees. Uh, but I've seen also being very aware of what's happening in the city. We have so many developments coming, we, they cut like hundreds of trees and they're good trees. And this is, um, uh, I mean, I would love to see trees when I walk on the streets and maybe they, they generally don't fall, but I think when people, I've seen a lot of people cut trees without permit too, being in the city. So I just think, uh, we should not punish somebody and this tree is not like heritage tree. Um, and I would be, um, uh, to, for the applicant to like make you the permit to have them cut the tree, maybe can, uh, we ask the conditions to put one other one, like maybe flowering small tree, whichever they please or something. I think so, I'll be more, um, going for the B, like I'll grant a palant, uh, so that's what my, I'm going forward. I'm going towards that.
All right.
Thank you. So I don't know, I just want people to like say my Commissioner, fellow members to say and then I can make motion.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Shukla. Uh, Commissioner Fegoni.
I, I don't think a homeowner should have to go through, struggle through so much steps just to get a tree cut down. That is obviously, um, she's gone through many years of taking care of this tree and it's obviously a problem. We heard it from the neighbors, they're, they're scared to walk around the tree. Um, she's done a lot of work on this. Look, we, we approve, we approve many planning proposals where they cut down trees in lots, big lots, and they cut them down, we don't say anything. Here, someone has a tree that obviously is causing a problem and we're, we're putting up a roadblock on it and I, I just can't see that. So for me, I think we should approve this and allow her to cut the tree down. Um, she's spending a lot of money and the fact that her insurance was dropped, it might happen again and we don't want that to happen to our residents. So we, we want people to stay in the city. So, I mean, to me, it's something that we should take an exception to, I believe, and I think is justified. If, if I was in a similar situation, I would think the same way she is. Um, but, um, you know, I, I love trees and I love plants, I garden all the time, but sometimes things just get too big, they get out of control. And, um, you know, it's, it's a common thing. And sometimes you have to make a, a hard decision and, and replace something. And I think this is one of those scenarios. I think it's clearly justified. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fegoni. Next, we have Commissioner Serrani.
Uh, thanks, uh, thanks, Chair. Um, is this a heritage tree?
No, it's not a heritage tree.
So what's the, uh, if it's not a heritage tree, can it just be cut down? Why, what's restricting this from being cut down?
So any tree that is, uh, thirty-eight inches or greater in circumference is deemed protected and requires a tree removal permit.
Okay, it's protected but not a heritage, heritage tree. I see, okay. Um, yeah, the, um, uh, I guess I'm just having a little trouble wrapping my head around this. The, uh, the city nominally plants trees in front of every house in the city, right? And those trees invariably extend over the sidewalks and over the streets. Uh, is the entire city in grave danger of being, uh, uh, hit by falling branches? I, I guess I'm, I'm just struggling with, uh, why this particular tree is a unique danger to the people walking by and, uh, compared to all the other thousands of trees all over the city? Is there, uh, something about this that makes it uniquely dangerous or?
Um, I'll speak to that. Um, you're touching on a very big point. Um, uh, all trees are dangerous at some point. All trees pose a risk, um, but I think as a community, we understand that there's a value to having these trees and that outweighs a lot of the risk that we have.
So I, I guess I have a little concern that if we approve this tree removal, then we may have a lot of people all over the city coming to us wanting to remove trees that, uh, are healthy and don't meet this criteria and, uh, so, um, I, I guess I'm inclined to follow staff's recommendation on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Serrani. Next, we have Commissioner Davis.
Uh, this has played out a lot differently than I, I imagined it coming, uh, to the hearing tonight. Uh, I, I think this is a situation where, um, the city's done nothing wrong. I, I suspect that the, uh, the scope of the application, um, that the form you actually fill out, um, there was a lot of information shared, uh, tonight by the applicant that probably didn't find its way into the, uh, in, into the tree removal permit application. Whether that was an oversight on her part or whether the, the form is a very simple one that doesn't, uh, uh, en- enable that, um, to me, the insurance, uh, the, the insurance is the, is the real stickler, right? Like, um, home insurance in California right now is just getting harder and harder and harder, right? Uh, we have the good fortune of being in Sunnyvale, which is, we're not having fire problems, right? Um, our neighbors, smaller neighbors do. Their houses are worth more than ours, but, so I don't feel so bad for them, but, uh, um, you know, the, the prospect of finding it very, very difficult to get homeowners' insurance, uh, is i- it's a nightmare, right? Um, and, and people shouldn't have to live through that, especially when you're how far from City Hall is she? Four blocks, five blocks? Right? Uh, uh, so, so that's the kicker to me. Um, um, I do have a, a motion ready to make. Um, no, uh, Vice Chair Shukla, you were, um, uh, or is there further discussion? uh, or is there further discussion before we want to make motions?
You you're welcome to make a motion and then we'll vote on whether or not.
Okay, it passes.
You're welcome. To make a motion then. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Uh, Commissioner Skar.
Thank you. Um, it's very fine line. I do agree a hundred percent that the insurance situation in California is very bad. Uh, and it's really hard regardless, trees or not trees, to get insurance these days. I totally get that. Uh, one of the things we have to understand that, and I'm not saying that this lady is making it up, but or the applicant is making it up. But everybody would be able at that point come and say, hey, the tree is danger to people, the tree is danger to 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 us or whatever. And, um, trees are very important ecologically and for the beauty of the city. And it's a healthy tree. If we are going to make a motion in favor of the applicant, I do think that should be a stipulation at the bare minimum of her replacing two to three, two to three trees. Um, mature trees, not not very mature, but I don't know, maybe a three year old tree, something that is pretty decent size. Yes, it will be expensive, but it will be a one time expense for her. And, um, that will replace, because we're talking about, you take this tree, and I know it sounds ridiculous, but less oxygen in the air, the more trees we're taking, we're we're damaging the environment. So I do think that if we are going to rule in favor because of a distressed situation, we should have a stipulation in. Now we can go ahead and make your motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I I just want whoever makes the motion, um, I would ask that, um, the maker of the motion identify the standard that's met under the municipal code for, um, granting the appeal if that is ultimately your motion.
Thank you and noted. Um, before we go to back to, uh, Vice Chair Shukla, I've got just several points as well. First, uh, I wanted to call out that the recommended conditions of approval do require replacement, um, of a tree or two trees or an in-lief fee. And that's probably something that could be, um, more specified, specif- excuse me, specified. Um, second, uh, for the for the homeowner, um, if we look at the conditions that are, or rather the, um, requirements, uh, for tree, uh, removal permit, there's potential hazard, it says potential hazard to people, which is really, I think that's unfortunately a fairly vague statement. Um, and then when you're presented with a picture of a very large branch, it's very hard to not to not see that. Obviously, I'm not being in in arborist myself, but listening, uh, to professional, um, input. And then also, the the third, um, re- removal permit would be if there is, um, there's an impairment of economic enjoyment. And I, it's very hard to not think about the fact that the amount of money that the homeowner has paid, my my position is the amount of money the homeowner has paid already. Um, it, at some point, it would it would be prohibitive. And I don't know if that's something that we would want for our residents. I don't think it's necessarily reasonable to expect a resident over a certain period of time to pay thousands of dollars and that they have to sustain that burden. At some point, does that just mean that they they can't afford to live there? I mean, at what point, if it's twenty thousand, if it was thirty thousand, there's some point that it should probably be, um, egregious. Um, and so that's, I I think this is challenging because Sunnyvale is a a tree friendly city, a tree loving city. Um, but there there's definitely, uh, I don't think this is a black and white case. So I'm curious, um, to be persuaded by the motion. With that, um, Vice Chair Shukla.
Um, okay, so I'm going to, um, I have to like say the code, correct? So we are going to, uh, I will remember that, SMC. Okay, hold on. So I would move that we grant the appeal with modified conditions of approval where we ask, um, um, to have the palant plant certain amount of like one or two. I'm not sure how much space they have. Looking from the property in front, I don't see much space. So I would suggest one tree, uh, and, um, of their choice because, uh, and uh, how do I mention the SMC, the tree removal permit, um, the municipal code, SMC nineteen point ninety four zero six zero? Is that what I need to say in coding?
So the staff report includes, um, I think it's on page one. It says that under the municipal code, section nineteen point nine four point zero six zero, one of the following standards must be met for approval of a protected tree removal permit. I'm asking that you, um, the commission identify which of the standards have been met if the motion is to grant the appeal and grant the tree removal permit. Which of these standards have been met?
And you'll have the opportunity to speak to your motion, but is there a second?
Okay.
For it? Please.
Uh, I don't believe the motion has been fully formed.
Was there more to your motion, other, okay?
That, uh, the the finding was not specified under nineteen point ninety four zero sixty.
Yeah, but can the finding not be meant or specified in the?
The commission needs to vote on the finding.
Correct. But so if someone makes a motion and there's someone who seconds it, then you speak to the motion. So this is, these are the findings. This is how I make the finding?
Needs to be incorporated into the motion as well.
Okay.
So then the maker of the motion will need to modify the motion and the seconder will need to resecond the motion.
The chair. Oh, uh, just one second.
Uh, sorry about it. Can you a little bit explain? Uh, so I need to like uh, consider one of the criteria, one of the conditions.
At this point, do you want to withdraw your?
I can withdraw it and maybe somebody can make them.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Shukla, and, uh, Commissioner Pine.
Uh, I didn't actually want to make the motion, but I had thought I I will yield to Commissioner Davis.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Davis.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I'm ready to make a motion, um, with alternative three. Uh, so I have the first part written down, so I I can get through that quickly. But the modified conditions, I'm gonna to, um, I'm gonna play it up by here a little bit. So, um, grant the appeal as the application meets, um, standards B, uh, C six and C seven of S of Sunnyvale Municipal Code nineteen point nine four dot zero six zero. Uh, B is that the tree represents a potential hazard. Uh, I I won't go into it when I, when I speak to it, I'll go into how all of this works. Um, C six, um, the properties become over landscaped with trees so that their too numerous crowded un- unreasonably restricts the property's ability to use their, property owners' ability to use their land. And C seven, the tree has outgrown its useful landscape value due to its inappropriate species, size and location. Um, for modified conditions, um, I I believe the code calls for two trees, one's like a twenty four inch and one's a thirty six inch. Um, is that the size of the pot? Did they come in? I don't I don't quite understand what that means.
Sure, if I may.
My front yard is too small. I, there's no way I can put two trees in my front yard. If you measure it, you will see that this.
See, I love this, this, I mean, of our, you know, go ahead, please.
So the replacement standard is, um, one thirty six inch box or two twenty four inch box trees?
Okay. Um, is thirty six inches the height of this apple or?
Those are that contains.
The the size of the container. Okay.
The tree can be anywhere on the property. It doesn't have to be only on the front.
Right, right. Um, okay. Um, yeah, uh, and, um, the modified condition is to take away the option for two twenty four inch and require a thirty six inch um, in the front yard. Uh, was that, uh, clear?
Okay. All right. Um, thank you, Commissioner Davis. Uh, and Commissioner Shukla, I see your hand is up. Is it still raised or? Okay.
I can second. I can second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, sir, for your motion.
Okay, and and to the motion. So I I gave some commentary earlier, so I won't repeat that. Uh, but going to the criteria, uh, exactly. Um, Liberty Mutual has told us that the the tree represents a potential hazard to people, structures or other trees. Um, I I don't necessarily agree with their methods. Um, we can't regulate that. Um, as to C six, um, the properties become over landscaped. Um, it's especially, okay, I don't like HOAs, right? But having to, having to handwater your front yard, uh, because the tree is basically soaking up all the nutrients a- and water in the yard. I have the same thing in my backyard. Um, I got rabbits who kept everything clean to keep the weeds out, uh, but I can't grow grass in my backyard. Um, I I completely understand that the tree i- is making it impossible to grow grass and comply with their HOA requirements. And then C seven, um, has outgrown its useful landscape value due to inappropriate species, size and location. Um, uh, this is just an inappropriate species for a lot this small. Um, um, I I was kind of surprised that this house was built in nineteen ninety three. I thought the very small lots things was a with with single family homes was a new thing. Um, but, uh, I was wrong. Um, yeah, uh, it it branches too much. It it needs more space. Um, you you know, I grew up in Texas. I I joke with people that they don't really have trees. They just have overgrown, um, bushes. Um, this one looks like an overgrown bush if you're, if you get used to California trees that are tall and straight and beautiful. Um, so those are, those are my rationales for the three, um, criteria. Uh, I think the fact that we, but I, hopefully this is narrowly crafted, um, so that it doesn't establish precedent. Um, we have a tree on the watch list. We have a very small lot. Uh, we have an HOA. Um, there are lots of things we can point to in the future if anybody comes forward and 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 we can tell you, no, it's not a precedent. So this is a pretty unique situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, and Vice Chair, uh, Shukla, to your second.
Um, thank you. And, um, my, I'm not going to go, uh, with the ordinances, but I'm going to state that I am, I was very proponent of tree. When I was in Los Altos Hills, I was in a committee and I, for every tree we cared for and a lot of people, I helped them to, um, kind of dedicate it as like heritage tree because they love that tree so much. And so you do a paperwork and then when they sell the property, they cannot cut the tree. Uh, but that's, uh, every house had one acre lot. Sunnyvale has a small lot. And I used to carry the same, um, uh, kind of mindset when I was, I joined Sunnyvale City. And I've been noticing that there are some good trees and there are trees which are ordinary. And also I started noticing that some trees grow very fast. Like in five years, you see growth and suddenly it's like a yew tree. And some tree takes long time to grow and they are beautiful. And we, I know that we have like oak tree, the trees which has, um, uh, twenty four inch diameter and they have taken years to grow. And we should not like, I definitely would not allow most people to like without the permit to cut the trees, but like not even with the permit, would not allow heritage tree, even though they are just like, you know, on the roadside. Uh, so I would not like grant that to everybody. But in this case, I feel that this tree is very, it can grow in like seven years. This tree can grow whatever the size you see right now, if you really care for it. Other thing is it's really close to the entrance. So I do worry about like, I've been noticing some ramps coming in my neighborhood and they require a longer, um, ramp because, um, there are two or three steps, um, or higher steps. So I do worry about, um, one of the comments we received that as, um, the homeowners are going to like aging home, then they would, they are caring for their house, they are caring for the tree. So I do consider that maybe they need to put a ramp and maybe they can, uh, plant a tree which of their choice at the a- appropriate location. And we should allow them because this is not, um, this is a very ordinary tree. It is, it's looking okay. I mean, we are not asking every tree to cut. We have, our streets are surrounded with city trees and we have inventory. But we should not like punish our homeowner because they came for permit. Because I've seen many people just cutting their trees. So anyway, that's the reason that I would, um, I would, uh, ask, consider my fellow commissioners that we are building high density, uh, residences. We allow them to cut so many trees uh, because to have residence where we have our existing residences are really following rules and regulations. And, um, just go one, one case at a time and consider that. Thank you. That's, that's why.
Thank you, Vice Chair Shukla. Next, we have Commissioner Saroni.
Uh, thanks, Chair. Uh, well, I, uh, I will not support the motion. I definitely sympathize with the homeowner, particularly the, uh, insurance issue, and that that sounds like part of a bu- a much larger, uh, problem, uh, that, uh, you know, somehow should be addressed. Uh, many years ago, the city planted a tree in front of my house. A branch broke off and fell on my roof, damaged my roof. Um, it just seems like, uh, that they they, by this criteria, these, the, uh, we will be, uh, people will be losing insurance. Anybody who has a tree in their yard will be losing their insurance. Um, which is, you know, makes no sense at all. Um, I think, you you know, s- supporting this motion, we're overriding the judgment of the, uh, uh, city staff and the city arborist and, um, you know, that's, uh, while I'm, there may be areas where I might be comfortable overriding city staff. Uh, in terms of trees and an arborist, I I don't feel comfortable, uh, doing that. And I want to point out that these two replacement trees, or however many they are, will grow and get bigger and will need to be trimmed. And, uh, and and I predict, uh, s- some of the branches will fall off of those trees at some point. So, uh, maybe we're just postponing something. But, uh, uh, it seems like this, the city has followed the law and maybe we should change the criteria, uh, at at some future point. And so it suggests this that, uh, in cases of, uh, insurance issue, that a city, a tree can be removed or something along those lines. But, uh, currently the law has, uh, clear criteria for this. And I don't, I don't feel that the, any of the cr- the items, uh, in the criteria are met. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Saroni. Next, we have Commissioner Pine.
Uh, yield the city staff.
Uh, Chair, if I may, just just to, so we understand the condition correctly. So the the applicant will be required to plant one thirty cent, thirty six inch box replacement tree in the front yard. And would the option to pay an in-lief fee still be part of the condition?
That was also my question as well, but is that part of your motion?
Uh, yeah, the in-lief fee would not be an option.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the second. And then?
Second, you two.
And then Commissioner Pine, did you have?
Yes, I I did. I just saw, so Connor Schroders panned up and wanted to get that, get that in first. Uh, yeah, I, I actually had a friendly amendment, which was, would it be possible to drop finding C six from the motion?
Um, listen.
Uh, yeah, my reading of C six is that it says the property has become, I'll just read it. Properties become over landscaped with trees so that they are too numerous, crowded and unreasonably restrict. I get the unreasonably restrict part, but my reading of C six is that it's basically supposed to be there are too many trees on the site and I'm, I don't see how we can apply C six when there's a singular tree. I, it, the numerous and crowded part does not, I I cannot make that finding.
Yeah, I felt like I was reaching a little bit there. I can accept the friendly amendment. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, uh, with that, I, this was a very difficult one, honestly. Um, what I'm get, uh, okay, so I'm not an expert on trees. I I li- I, oh, I'm inclined to give a lot of deference to to the staff findings, to, and to what I've been hearing. And what it sounds like I'm hearing tonight is I'm hearing from city staff that basically this tree could be pruned to mitigate the potential hazard for, mitigate the potential hazards. What I'm hearing from applicant appallant is that applicant appallants, arborists, plural, the two they've had, the two she's had. arborists, plural, the two they've had, the two she's had over the thirty years of homeownership have not been able to prune the tree to mitigate the potential hazard. And what I'm struggling with is that I honestly believe everybody. I honestly believe everybody. Like, I'm willing to believe that I'm willing to believe that it would be possible to prune the tree such that it could, over a period of time, be essentially made safe. What I'm, however, I I take the applicant other word that while I believe this to be possible, I don't necessarily believe it to be, I I don't, I'm not comfortable just saying that like, I'm not comfortable just sitting here and saying, okay, this means that applicants are burst are clearly incompetent and don't know what, and don't know what they're doing. Like, I'm not, I I'm willing to say that if the applicants are burst over the years are not have not been able to, have not been pruning the tree in such manner that potential hazard, and it has been regularly, and again, we've, it has been regularly pruned. Like, if it hadn't been regularly pruned at all, then I would not have been able to make the finding. Then I but I guess where I'm going with this is that I think is that I'm willing to say that although I suspect I suspect there is a pruning technique that would represent a potential hazard, I'm also willing to bet, willing to say that this probably is not necessarily common technique among arborists more generally. And I think I am able to make the finding with B just because it's clearly not, it's not being pruned. I think we maybe, I don't know that we can basically say you need to find very I don't know how much we can basically require saying if the multiple arborists that have been employed by applicant have not been able to prune it in such way to present a, to mitigate the potential hazard, I I'm uncomfortable saying, okay, you're neat, okay, you need to shop around for arborists that are able, that are able to find what appears to be the correct technique. I'm as you can probably tell, I'm not I'm a little uncomfortable with this. I would prefer to save the tree if possible, but I'm not I'm not, I'm not convinced that it's, that it's going to be feasible. And I feasible do so in a way that will mitigate the hazard. And I'm not can and I'm not convinced that there is that there is a path forward that's going to allow for both the success of the tree and the success of the applicant and other neighbors. If somebody if somebody makes a really strong argument to the contrary, I could be convinced. But as of now, I believe I am able to make the required findings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Commissioner Skor.
I'm as well. I have a hard time. As if it takes about eighteen hundred dollars to take the whole tree down. It should take way less to prune it, even once a year or every other year. And since I don't feel like we, I don't feel that we met exactly all the city requirements to remove the tree. I do believe that if it was pruned well and the right way, maybe it would not be an issue. Especially when the city arborist went out to the, to the site and checked it out and did not recommend it. I'm sure that the arborist would not want anything on his mind to put anybody at danger. The city doesn't want anybody to be at danger. I do understand it's an ongoing expense for the applicant. And I do understand that insurance is hard to get. However, if you prune away the tree from the house, even once a year at a lower expense, then you shouldn't have any problem with your insurance company. If the tree was at the danger to fall, I believe that the arborist would recommend to take the tree down. Or I do appreciate that my colleagues here agreed to consider actually planting something else in case and it will pass. However, I, I, like my other colleagues here feel that this tree should stay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I've got a couple of commissioner hands up, but I don't think they're intended to be up if commissioners don't mind checking to confirm your hand is down. Okay, so the, I'm very much on the, on the fence with this one. This is very challenging. Simply because, again, we are a city that values our trees. In fact, we value them so much that we are willing to have a planning commission meeting for over an hour to talk about the removal of one tree on someone's property. Like that is, I was actually just feeling so grateful that we live in a place that that is of consequence. So I don't, no matter what, I think there is a win for us for that. And there's a level of, we're very fortunate. I don't think by, I think if we, if we approve this, the, the applicant's request and we allow them to cut down a tree, I don't think we're opening up. We're going to see a bunch of trees being cut down because I don't think that's the nature of our city. And I also don't think, it's not cheap. It's not like, the process isn't easy. It's not cheap. I don't, I don't think that that's a reasonable concern. I do think the way that the arborist described, I think you said it was like limb drop or what was that term again?
It's called summer limb failure.
Summer limb failure. So when, when you say that, it, it does make me wonder if also item A, that tree is diseased or damaged, because if summer limb drop occurs that to me, if it's, if it's an otherwise healthy looking branch, but it has to be damaged even if on the inside where it would fail.
Typically, it comes from high, a lot of weight at the end of the branches. So it's just a lot of leaves, a lot of growth, a lot of extension, and it will drop. Like the limb will just get so heavy it snaps. But it's very common in the higher heat. A tree typically tries to shut down different areas to preserve water. So as it stops water to a certain artery, that just becomes more brittle. But that's common throughout the city.
So I hear it's common, but we don't get that. I've been on the commission for several years and we haven't had this come here before. So this just, I unfortunately don't, if this were, I feel if this were common and we're seen as like you know, there's menace trees on the loose in Sunnyvale that we'd have, we would have heard about them or seen them. I believe you entirely. But in this instance, I, I think that my, my gut is that when there is a conflict and the tie to me goes to the homeowner. And so I want to be clear that I am challenged because I, I believe, it's similar to what Commissioner Pine said. I think what everyone's saying is honest and sincere. I don't think that you have like a secret pact with the trees. Although I do think you probably like trees more, well, no, not maybe more than anyone, because a lot of people in this room love trees. But I do think that the, the standard is that the homeowner has shared in the pictures that we've seen, I cannot see, to me, it meets multiple, multiple set standards. Multiple findings. So I will be supporting this as well. That being the case, yes, your hand is up. Okay, that being the case, recording officer, please connect a vote.
The motion passes with five yeses and Commissioners Segura and Sarani voting no.
Thank you. And Planning Officer, what is the fate of this?
The appeal is granted and the tree removal permit is approved and the planning commission's decision is final.
All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you for your time. All right, that completes our general business, which brings us to non agenda items. Planning officers, do any commissioners have any non agenda items or comments? Commissioner Pine.
Thank you. I may be preempting a staff comment, but is there any? But I would note that previous Tuesday, on Tuesday night, city council approved approved significant changes to what I guess will now be formerly known as the study issue process. And I was wondering if staff had any comment on next steps, on next steps as they affect the planning commission.
Well, we, we'll, we'll find out more in the coming weeks about the new process, but I understand that every November, the, the planning commission will be asked to agendize a discussion and then participation is, is optional. But for ideas, which are, is kind of some of the new terminology, we're getting rid of the, the term study issue and, and using the the term council priority projects or CPPs. But we have until December of this year to come up with a, with, with one idea because each, each commission can have one idea that they present to the council. And then that will be submitted to them in February where they have the new, or where they have their workshop. So it's gonna be, yeah, so there can change to the process. And from what we understand, all the deferrals are eliminated, are eliminated. So if it doesn't get voted in that particular year, it's going to be off the list. And all the existing study issues that we have on the deferred list will also be removed as well. So.
We still have other commissioner. Yeah, comments. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. It's just you, you're, you're actually next.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you for that summary. And I would just add to my fellow commissioners, I would note that there is a ideal list that has already been generated and you can see it on tomorrow's, it's at the info only section of tomorrow's council ideas. And it does have a couple of things on it already relating to the village centers. So I would just note to my fellow commissioners, if you're thinking of ideas to bring for December, it's probably a good idea to not duplicate what's already on the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. Thank you, Mr. Schroeder. Commissioner Sarani.
Thanks, Chair. Well, I sort of had the same question. I guess at the very least, is there a date one before which we would need to submit any study issues?
It would be by the, the last December date. And yeah, I'm not sure how we're gonna handle it for the holidays, but we do have the December eighth meeting in December. So I would
Would that be the
Most likely, because if you look at a couple of weeks after that, that would be let's see, twenty second and not sure if we're gonna have it on that, on that date. So I would try to plan for the, have it by, ready by the eighth.
And do we need to just bring something to that meeting or submit it ahead of time so that it can be agendized?
Well, we'll have the, the item agendized, so it will have the discussion that can occur at that time. But the, the particular item doesn't need to be agendized from what we understand, just that there is going to be a discussion on the, the ideas to, to submit to the council.
So we just need to show up with, be prepared to present a study issue. Does the form still apply? There was a form for?
Doesn't look like that's gonna be part of it now. So there's, there's not as much work upfront where, where staff is, isn't producing a report and commissioner doesn't have to do a form. It's, it's just discussed at the meeting and then whatever rises to the top would be the one that gets presented to the council.
It's interesting that they decided we don't do any ranking, but we only get one study issue to recommend. So if we have multiple study issues, we need to pick one without ranking them. Which one is the one we propose? So that'll be an interesting exercise, I guess. We could flip coins or something. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sarani. Commissioner Davis.
The same topic, I think we should definitely agendize. In the email that came that there was a, it's pretty generic how we agendize it. So I'll defer to the chair on this, but on a straw poll, my hand is, is really high for agendizing this.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Fgon.
How do we manage this? Because like, do we, we have an idea? Do we, you know, we're talking to our commissioners? Do we, I mean, it's a little different, right? So what's the process? Like, how do we formulate it and so that we're not violating you know, certain criteria as far as getting too far into it? But how do we talk about it? We kind of need to brainstorm and think, right? If we have an idea.
Right. So the, it would be discussed at, at one of the hearings, so likely the December eighth meeting, we probably have it agendized at least by then. And then it would be, it would just be a verbal discussion only. And then I would imagine the, the commissioners can vote on which one they think is, should be the one that gets forwarded to the council.
Are you allowed to seek support from other groups or other individuals to help support your idea?
Well, I guess you could do that beforehand. I mean, as long as it's not a Brown Act violation, I mean, but that's, you'd have to, you know, come ready for the hearing to present something that you feel is, should be studied.
Okay, so it's kind of a working process. We're all kind of going through it the first time.
Right. Well, well, I think we're all gonna be, there's gonna be a little bit of growing pains because we're all trying to figure out the new process, especially because it's such a, a change from, from the one we're used to.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Fgon. Next, we have Vice Chair Shupa.
I mean, I have the similar question that like, will be voting, like if people suggest, because we have to have a Brown Act, so we can't email it to each other.
No.
No. So that means we talk about discuss here and like have a voting kind of majority. And select one, because we do need to select one out of, let's say, if everybody brings say my different idea, five or seven ideas.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's how I imagine it would work out. There would be some, some type of vote at the end. But I think we'll be getting some more guidance in the coming weeks with, with the particulars of how to do it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Shukla. Next, we have Commissioner Pine.
Yep, thank you. I just okay, too much into the weeds on this. I, I'm just gonna say that I think straw poles are a very useful tool to avoid to getting the sense of a body without taking formal action. And I think that will be helpful in avoiding getting into a parliamentary cul-de-sac. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pine. All right, no other commissioner. Hands are up. The only thing I wanted to add is, I just wanted to let my fellow commissioners know that when it comes to the point of when we talk about an opportunity to have discussion, make a motion. My expectation is that anyone, even the very first person can make a motion. That does not, that will not prevent anyone, no commissioner will be denied an opportunity to speak. Because generally what I observe is advocacy comes on either the front end or the back end. So just, just, there is a beauty in clarity. And there, there will most certainly be issues that it probably, everyone's picking up that we're going to be very supportive and probably make the motion quickly. And there's gonna be probably some, some opportunities in times referenced today where there might be more discussion. Either way, my, my take is it doesn't deny a commissioner, any commissioner, a chance to fully express their opinion. If someone wants to be daring and make a motion, there's obviously risk to that, especially if it's gonna be denied. But just, just wanted to make sure that every commissioner knows that even if we do move to a vote early, if someone makes the motion, that, that won't prevent you from being able to, to advocate against the motion as well. And then to staff comments.
No other comments, but I have a bittersweet announcement. This, this is going, this is likely going to be my last planning commission meeting with the city. As I'm taking a job with the city of Mountain View.
I will have congratulate this. And also I'm going to have to give my, my friends in Mountain View politics some, some, some grief.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a pleasure serving with you all. And thank you for all your support over the years.
Well, that is, that is bittersweet, but congratulations. They are lucky to get you. All right. And with that, I am happy to adjourn this meeting at eight forty five PM. Thank you to all.